We'll call the meeting back to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good Monday afternoon. We will go into the approval of the minutes of the meetings held March 22nd, 31st, and April 7th. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those minutes are approved. We did not have anybody sign up for, to address the board on non-agenda or agenda items, so we'll skip on down to number nine, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. Now the good news report. Deanne, thank you.
Good evening. A few meetings ago, I mentioned that I'd be providing an update for the school board on the plans to celebrate the Sioux Falls School District's 150th anniversary. That is our sesquicentennial. To set the stage, I want to share a bit of our earliest history. The district was formally established on July 3rd, 1871. Old records indicate the first school opened in 1870 in the government barracks under the direction of teacher Mary A. Benton, who had 17 pupils at that time. However, it was the summer of 1871 when we had a newly elected Minnehaha County Superintendent, John Vipas, and he divided the county into seven school districts as one of his very first official acts as county superintendent. District number one then was comprised of the entire Sioux Falls township. Still, it took another two years for the first school board to be established, and the elected members of the first school board were A. Gale, Director, R.F. Pettigrew, Clerk, and D.S. Goodyear, Treasurer. Lots of initials there. So those were your predecessors. The district's 150th anniversary celebration will take place during the 2021-2022 school year, with our kickoff event scheduled for Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, to be held at Jefferson High School. More details to come on that. A group of nine members, making up a good cross-section of our community, agreed to serve on a planning committee for this work. The committee met virtually four times in February and March. We had wonderful brainstorming sessions. We identified the audiences important to reach and also the events and activities by which to reach those audiences. We dreamt up some big ideas, some small ideas, and it was something that a member said during one of those meetings that actually led us to our theme that we've chosen for the 150th anniversary. This is our theme. It is Rooted in the Past: Reaching for the Future. We felt the symbol of a tree allows us to capture the past, present, and the future. We're currently working on finalizing this logo. As you can see, it has draft all over it right now. There are a few tweaks that we will make along the way, but we felt that a tree with all of its rings inside and the years of, you know, that you could see if you went through the trunk was a really great depiction of our past, our present, and our future. So, as mentioned, on August 10th, we will hold our official ribbon cutting at Jefferson High School. That will mark our future while also remembering our past. We will welcome new and longtime supporters of the public schools to that anniversary kickoff and host community tours throughout the new high school. Dr. Staben will share some information about the district's new strategic priorities and will reveal the new district website at that time as well. This fall, holding to the tree theme, when students are back in school, we plan to seek sponsors to purchase a tree that will be planted on the grounds of each school. And the committee really viewed this as a way to give our students and our schools a chance to invest in the future and in the future of our city by planting trees, given the Emerald Ash Bore, that we've had to take down many trees because of that. So we hope this is a wonderful celebratory time for students, and if families can attend as well, COVID pending, a real celebration for each school as they plant a tree to mark the 150th anniversary. Two of our planning committee members have agreed to dig into the boxes of historic archives that we have in our records room. That work starts next week. Then, at the first board meeting of each month, I will be bringing items to share with you from the historic archives, just to give you a glimpse of either the notes in the board minutes or something static to bring along with me to depict our past. Further, the materials then that we collect will be incorporated into the renovation of the IPC lobby. We'll be doing some work out here, and we'll be using one of our walls to make a timeline in celebration of the district's past. That timeline will also include room for future growth and future decades of history as well. Additionally, we're excited to do some video work with our immigrant and refugee population, really want to hear why they appreciate the Sioux Falls Public Schools, and so we look forward to capturing their stories as well. We will be encouraging students to submit art, writing, and poetry for our contest. Another item we're really excited about is a digital time capsule, where we will be submitting pictures of some of those items that we come across in the archives and then encouraging other people to submit their photos as well, maybe favorite memories, you know, of homecoming 1965 or, you know, something along that line. So, really hoping to engage our community and our alumni, whether they're here in Sioux Falls or across the country. They could submit photos and be part of that digital time capsule so that we can capture a lot more history in our time as well. So, those are just a couple of the items we have planned for the 150th. I know it's a lot of information, but the key time to remember is August 10th will be our kickoff, and then we will give our schools flexibility to decide when they're going to do their tree planting. We'll have some other, you know, learn about your school's namesake days and things like that, dress in the era that your school was built. So, but we want to allow flexibility for our buildings. As we know, we can't necessarily say everybody's going to do it this day at this time. We want them to have some autonomy as well, and so we'll, we'll look forward to just a whole year of celebration next year, and it'll be a good one after all we've been through. Any questions for me?
Thank you so much. With the tree planting, who, do they contact the individual school, or is there someone at?
You know, we'll release more information about that. My goal would be to put a form on our website where if someone would want to sponsor a tree at a particular school, of course, you may have three people that want, we're just going to do one tree at each school. So, first come, first served type of thing, and we haven't put that information out there yet, but that will be, we'll have that available likely in June.
Awesome. I just think, you know, history is so important as to why we are, where we are today.
Absolutely.
As a school district, and so thank you for digging into this. I'm, I'm a history major, so I'm going to love hearing these reports when you guys do and dig into the archives to bring those things. Just seeing the picture in the one office back there of one of the first schools.
Right.
At Sioux Falls Schools, fun to see. So, thank you for doing this and look forward to the celebration.
Yeah, I'm kind of a, I love this kind of stuff too. So, I find myself getting lost when I'm digging for the history. I kind of get lost in it myself, and I know Bev Chase has done considerable work in the past archives, and so she'll be a wealth of knowledge too as, as we kind of put the pieces together. But really, just much appreciation for our planning committee, who took the reins and said, of course, and now they're, they're starting to help with the work also. I promised them it was really just planning, but at the end, if I said if they, you know, felt called and wanted to participate in some way, shape, or form, and so many of them are stepping forward to help with this work as well. So, certainly appreciate what they will bring to the, the celebration in the future.
I love hearing how kids are going to be involved in their own schools, because there's a lot of people, maybe I shouldn't say this out loud, but I don't know why their schools are named the way that they are.
Sure.
And so I think it's great for not just the kids at that school, but the kids who went to that school or even just the people who live near a school to really have an understanding of why did we have this name in comparison to some other name that could have been chosen or whatever. So, that'll be exciting to have some, some school pride, but also some district pride as well. So, very cool.
Absolutely. And we're talking about the, the schools that no longer exist also. So what about the Bancroft? What about Emerson? What about, so we were wanting to bring that, those pieces in as well.
Can you tell us who was on the committee, or am I supposed to know that already?
Oh, who is on, oh, no, but you're not supposed to know it. I'm not sure I can remember everyone, but let me give it a shot. Ann Smith, who was previously with the district, recently retired. Jeff Herbert, who is the Washington High Historian extraordinaire and former teacher. Deana Barth, a former school board member. Ruth Parkhurst, who has been involved in, I think, three different PTAs for her children's schools. David Joll, who is an author himself, an immigrant who came here as a high school student, one of the lost boys of Sudan. He was wonderful to, to pick his brain, because we want that involvement from our, our new families as well. This is so hard.
They didn't mean to put you on the spot.
This is so hard, and yeah.
And the rest.
Okay. Allison Struck from the foundation. Sorry, I don't remember the last.
That one guy and that one gal, and then the rest.
Yes, those people. No, really, I mean, people brought a lot of great ideas forward, and like I said, boy, it's easy to dream big, but some of those things come with little money. So, I think we came up with some, some ideas and suggestions that, you know, will be great.
Well, thank you to those people.
Yes. I'm sorry if I forgot someone's name.
Well, and I just, I keep telling Bev she needs to write a book, because I have heard several of her stories, and I think.
There is no shortage of information in the archives.
I keep telling that, Bev, you need to write a book, because she's a wealth of information as well.
Yeah. So it'll be a great year moving forward, and just happy to have the support of the school board and look forward to making those connections to past staff members, administrators. Everyone has something to offer, and so we want to engage them at, at whatever level they're interested in engaging. So.
It'll be really fun to celebrate after the year we've had, so.
Yes, it will. Thanks, Deanne.
Thank you. Move on. We had no new conflicts of interest presented, so move to items 12A through E, Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved. Now to 13A, Supplemental Consent to Sanford Health. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes with one abstention from board member Ryder. Now on to 14A, K-12 Health Curriculum. Dr. Boyson.
Good evening. Tonight, evening. There we go. Tonight I bring you the K-12 Health Curriculum Study Adoption Report. Just to provide you that information on that health curriculum review and recommend the curriculum adoption for the, starting the 2021-22 school year. And it falls under Student Outcomes, priority area of one, to provide that rigorous and effective engaging curriculum and instruction for all students to emphasize growth and reduce that achievement gap. The Sioux Falls District maintains a curriculum review cycle that is in alignment with the development of the adoption of the revised standards at the Department of Education, and that last South Dakota Health Science adoption of new standards was in August 2017. The Health Curriculum Study began in the fall of 2019 with that K-12 Steering Committee, which involved teachers, administrators, parents, community members, and we reviewed the current programming standards, the South Dakota new standards, and the current trends and practices in health instruction. The Steering Committee established the K-12 educational philosophy and goals to guide that study, and they had the vision and the mission statement, and then they used the K-12 Health Goal Statements that were adopted by the Department of Education Health Standards in 2017. And those goal statements really work on analyzing the influence of culture and media and technology and other health factors as that impacts our students. We wanted to make sure that students had the ability to assess valid health information in promoting products and services and be an advocate for themselves. The ability to use interpersonal communication skills and enhance their health, make good decisions as they grow up. Goal setting, we know that's important, so that's enhanced there. And then, health-enhancing behaviors and reduce health risks. And again, advocate for themselves, their family and the community around the areas of health. So that was the guiding goal statements for that health curriculum study. And then we break it down into three different levels, and our special education group was right alongside our elementary, middle school, and high school teachers, along with our English language teachers also, just to make sure, and our counselors and our nurses, to make sure that we had that whole child and addressed all areas, including social, emotional health for all three levels. So in elementary, at the elementary level, health is taught one quarter through, throughout their years in elementary, but those standards are embedded in everything we do all day long, all year long. So it's not like they get health for one quarter and we're done. It's embedded in all those different opportunities, in those daily lessons, in all content areas in the classroom and community lessons that address the whole child, social, emotional, and academically. In addition, the committee recognized the importance of supporting students' social, emotional well-being, and the counselors continue to play an instrumental role in supporting those health standards. And that counselor study started this year, and it's continuing into next year, so that it's a great alignment with our health curriculum. So that way, we make sure that we're speaking the same language and working on those same goals. And so the elementary health committee will continue to work with a K-12 counseling committee to ensure that cohesion, and the elementary curriculum, they're going to continue with what we have, and they're working on writing pacing guides and into that instructional framework to ensure that all those standards are met throughout the K-5 experience for elementary students. At middle school, the middle school health curriculum was developed to establish, promote and support health-enhancing decision-making behaviors for young adolescents. The middle school health is an essential class, and it takes one quarter at that middle school level in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. However, it's stretched over a semester because of the AV schedule. And students who pass health during middle school are exempt from that at, at the high school level. In addition, the South Dakota State Standards and Middle School Health Curriculum addresses adolescent risk behaviors, and they work with the CDC to help support CPR, which is taught in sixth and seventh grade and eighth grade health, and then suicide prevention is part of eighth grade health, and it's in that curriculum, and they use the Helpline and Center for Suicide and Crisis Support to help support that work at the middle school level. They use the middle school teachers working on that committee, chose Goodheart Wilcox as a resource, and it's an online curriculum, digital resource, that aligns with the state content standards, and it parallels what the high school has chosen. And the nice thing about the Goodheart Wilcox is it updates as things change within our community. So over the last year and a half, vaping has become very prevalent, and they updated their curriculum. So then that way, right on beat, we didn't have to wait for a new adoption or go find supplemental material. And so that's a really great piece of that Goodheart Wilcox. And so that's the recommendation for the middle school, that they will move forward with that curriculum. And then at the high school, again, they, that committee began the fall of 19. They looked at the physical, mental, emotional, and social well-being of students as outlined as a district's vision and mission and those goal statements. And the middle school teachers joined the high school teachers for several meetings to determine the essential health topics. They looked at disease prevention and how to analyze and influence peers, media, and technology, and health behaviors. Other topics included teaching students to develop interpersonal communication skills, decision-making skills, and goal-setting skills to enhance health. And those were determined essential pieces for the curriculum. And they wanted to make sure that students had the ability to practice health-enhancing behaviors, access needs and services for themselves and their family and the community to support. to support all those healthy behaviors. And again, they chose the comprehensive health high school edition from Goodheart Wilcox. And the texts would meet their students' needs. So we buy one set of texts for the classroom, but then that digital platform allows that updating as needed. And special education was in, like I said, right alongside, working with the teachers part of that group. And they're going to recommend that we stay with the current health materials used within the RISE program. And then at the middle school level, the buildings are working to integrate the RISE students right alongside the general ed students in that curricular setting. And so all professional development for our health curriculum will happen in those three days before school in August to make sure those teachers are up and running. And Goodheart Wilcox will provide some additional training for those teachers. So with that, and there's our committee participation, again, teachers of all levels, general ed, special ed, EL teachers, we had counselors, liaison, social workers, nurses, parents, community members, and administrators on the work to make sure that we're encompassing all needs of students at all levels and it reaches out into the community also. And with that, the study examined the physical, mental, social, emotional needs of all students. As we know, that's part of the district's curriculum. The health curriculum focuses on empowering students to function as global citizens and prepare them for the demands of the changing world. With that, I'll stand by for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Dr. Boyson. And the summary hit what I was going to kind of circle back on. I know you talked a lot about in the elementary portion about social, emotional learning. Could you touch a little bit about in the middle school and high school where that will be hit upon for the students?
Yep. So it's embedded right in there. So then again, really making sure that it's in our health curriculum, but also it's throughout our day. In pro time at middle school, they have curriculum that helps support that social, emotional well-being. And then in high school, making sure that we meet each individual student's needs. And I really believe at high school level, they take time with the counselors and the teachers to make sure that they have the programming that meets their needs, but then also any of the social, emotional needs to help support them as they move into that next step.
And with that being embedded, especially in the high school, since if they pass it in middle school, they're still getting it even through PE or any of their other courses that they have.
Exactly. And you know, and it's really that whole child approach, knowing we can't just teach one course and be done. It's how do we address that every single day in every single classroom? And if you know your students and you can tell when something's not quite right, taking time to get to know them, build that relationship, and support them.
I think it's really important, the middle school piece that you talked about. I think it's wonderful that we're teaching them CPR. Our students are out in the community, they're in lots of different places. And just to have, you know, maybe they don't get the card that they're certified by the American Heart Association, but they know that they have the skills and they have the knowledge and they have the experience. And you know, they're babysitting, they're doing other things. And so I think it's really great that we're kind of arming them with just another piece of education that may, or that we hope they don't have to use, but if they were in that situation, they would have at least the knowledge of being able to do that. I also think that mental health is so important and to be able to talk about that in our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classes as part of their health curriculum. I think depression and anxiety is much more widespread than people are willing to admit. And so getting people to talk about that and normalize that as part of conversations with their classmates is very important too, when that middle school timeframe is such a formative time for those students. So to be able to have those open and honest factual conversations in a classroom setting is important to building empathy and understanding for the people that they're in school with and in other activities with. So two really good, I think, additions, and maybe they're not additions, maybe they're just something that we've carried over, but two good things to point out that we're really trying to help our students and support them as our lives are changing and their influences are changing. And so we have to change to adapt to meet those needs as well.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, do I have a motion to approve the recommended adoption of the K-12 health curriculum?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion on second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved. Thank you, Dr. Boyson.
Every time.
Good evening, and I bring forward to you this evening the two different calendar board reports that'll be built into one here. The first one being the school calendar, date changes for the 2021, this current school year. And my compliments to the calendar committee a few years ago when they established this calendar. They truly missed almost every significant weather phenomenon of this year. They all came on a day that we didn't have to have school, minus one. And so we bring that forward to you this evening. And this one here, the Sioux Falls School District did incur one day of school cancellation due to inclement weather. That day was March 15. And per the negotiated agreements and the calendar adoption, any day missed due to inclement weather is added to the end of the school year. That would mean the students' final day of school will be changed from Tuesday, May 25th to Wednesday, May 26th. And the teacher's workday would be on Thursday, May 27. So the administrative recommendation on this is to approve the 2021 final student day of school be moved from Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, to Wednesday, May 26th. And the teacher workday from Wednesday, May 26th to Thursday, May 27th due to the one day missed for inclement weather on March 15th of 2021. And that is the recommendation. I'd stand by for any questions on this first recommendation.
Are you sure we're not going to have any other weather days?
We waited, and usually you're fairly safe at this point in time of the year, but I can never guarantee that.
I feel like we're jinxing ourselves.
The middle school group would say I did because I told them, you know what, I think we've made it. We will not miss any more days than we missed a week later.
And would you address why, like, why we add these on instead of just eliminate?
In the Sioux Falls School District, for planning purposes, it had been established years ago and as part of the negotiated agreement with our teachers group, that any of those days missed is added on to the end of the year. That way we do not build in extra days as part of our contracted days. And so there is a guessing game by our parents or students or staff as to where those days would fall. They automatically are added at the end of the year due to any inclement weather, and that's part of the negotiations. Then we also post that on the website when we post the parent calendars. We put that in the bottom of the calendar there, that any days missed would be made up at the end of the year. That way when people plan their vacations during the year, they know that we would not be impeding upon any of those.
Weren't staff asked regarding adding remote versus having the day off?
And we did. We continue to look at that and we'll look at that potentially for next year as well. The option that we could potentially, with the state's changes, be able to utilize any of those days as remote days and not add any on. But we're still in working with our groups on that. We wanted to make sure everybody be comfortable with that change before we implemented that change.
Any other questions for Dr. Gold?
No, I'll just add that I think it's always been confusing to me because we'll have school on Wednesday, but it will actually be a Monday schedule when you go. Because they always, you always make up the day that you missed, right? And it was a Monday, I think, that we were gone. You know what I mean?
Yep.
So like whatever classes you would have had on your A or B day or whatever.
From the high school.
Yeah. So I know that's a ways out, but that always caught me off guard as a parent. Like, what do you mean you have this today? You had that yesterday, you know? So we try to make up so that you get the day or the classes that you would have had that day. You are actually making up those specific classes versus just continuing the cycle of the classes that are already out there, so.
Seeing no other questions, do I have a motion to approve the 2021 final student day be moved to Tuesday, May 25th to Wednesday, May 26th? And the teacher workday from Wednesday, May 26th to Thursday, May 27th due to the one day missed for inclement weather on March 15th?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion on second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved.
The second calendar report I have here for you this evening is the 2223 school year calendar. We always try to do these calendars two years in advance so that people have that foresight to be able to make any types of plans that they would need to. This calendar is also as part of the strategic plan. We do seek out and gather that feedback from all stakeholders. And you'll see with the size of the committee we have at the end with 29 individuals that represent a variety of groups, including our parental groups. You'll see that committee coming up. But really a big part of this is to gather that feedback and that's something we've done extensively over the years with our calendar proposals. I will go through the significance in the guidance that we adhere to from the feedback that we've had from our community and the changes that we made to this year's calendar that would be different from the last couple of years. So the first part of that is we did maintain the start date guideline that we've been utilizing, where we start with a two-day week. And that's partially coming through with the feedback from our elementary groups, that be able to start those younger individuals with a two-day week and then be able to work into that with the weekend. And then coming back in that next week with a four-day week. And then, of course, with the Labor Day, we had that part of the compromise that went in with the feedback from our community where it's a four-day, then Labor Day weekend. And then we started into the full partial of the school. We also maintained concluding the school year prior to Memorial Day weekend. That's another commitment that we have been trying to hold too. We also, this year, did not have students in attendance on both Native American Day and on Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And that's something we started, this is the first year we had that in the calendar. Starting in 2223 school year, we will also have the teachers and then those corresponding nine-month staffs, such as the EAs that work in the buildings or some of the clerical. They will not be in attendance on both Native American Day and Martin Luther King Jr. Day. So we did make a change so that there would not be the staff in on those two days as well in the schools. The next part that we worked on is the compensatory day in March. That corresponds with the girls' state basketball tournament being hosted. I had to change that to East River because there are some changes depending on where the location is. With the boys and girls, it alternates every other year with which ones in the East River, most of which with the boys' tournament's in the Sioux Falls and then it goes to Rapid City. The girls', it isn't always in Sioux Falls, but it still correlates to that Friday. So it goes every other year that way. We did continue that practice. We also moved the January 16th in-service to February 6th. And that then allows our staff to be able to be off on that day with the Martin Luther King Jr. Day. We moved that to February 6th. And in that February 6th now is where we have the full day in-service. That was on Martin Luther King Jr. Day. So the full day in-service will now be on February 6th. That helped our elementaries out so they could have parent-teacher conferences in the afternoon and not impede upon the negotiated agreement because they had to stop a little bit earlier on the day when it was in January, just because of the fact that it was a grading window as well. So we couldn't go as late into the evening there. We eliminated in that same process because we did hear back from a lot of individuals as far as those partial days with either early dismissal or early start. And we did eliminate both the November 4th and March 17th early dismissals for middle school and elementary school. And so that way it stays consistent throughout the year. There are no longer those early dismissals. And then one day was added at the end of the calendar to account for the combination of that day we missed with the move away from Martin Luther King Jr. Day and the in-service moving to February 6th. So that one day was put, so the end of the year this year will now be, that final student day will now be May 24th, which is a Wednesday. That still allows us plenty of time in that week with Thursday and Friday in case we do have any inclement weather days. So significant dates that are coming up, the first day of school, August 25th. And then you can see in there, October 10th and January 16th are those two days where we would not have the staff and students. January 12th is the end of the first semester. And the 10th is that compensatory day with the girls' state basketball tournament. And then May 24th would be the last student day with graduation again on May 28th. The final part of this is the committee participation. We do have 29 individuals, which is a large committee, but we work very well going through and gaining that feedback on changes that could come into the calendar to continually to try to make this a better calendar for our staff, students, and community. And we do have all the different groups represented, including six parents that sit on this committee and help to provide us input. The calendar committee approved by a vote of 23 to 1. And the one, some people will look at that and say, well, why one? Very good reasons. Our custodial group try to have as long a summer as they possibly can to get all our buildings ready. And so when that one day added in there, you know, they would wish to have any and all days that they could during the summer to make sure the building's ready. And we can't fault them for that. They do an incredible job of having our buildings ready each fall. But the more days they have, they're happier with that. So that was the vote of the calendar committee to bring this recommendation forward to you. And so the recommendation is to approve the 2223 school year calendar based on the calendar committee's work and recommendation as detailed in this report. I will stand by for any questions.
I'd like to thank our board members who also sit on that, Kate Parker and Todd Tulkey. So thank you for your work on that additional work. So thank you very much. Seeing no other questions, do I have a motion to approve the 2223 school year calendar as provided by Dr. Gold?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion on second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved. Thank you. And these will all be on the district website.
We will. The 2021 will absolutely be updated and have that ready and prepared to go. We try to wait with the 2223 till we get to the end of this year so people don't get confused with that and starting to plan for next years.
Gotcha.
Because some people will look at the wrong calendar then. So we try to wait till the conclusion of the school year here and then we'll post that once. There's always two sitting out there.
And the 2122 one is already out there.
Yes.
And if people do want to reference this, they can just go to the school board reports page on the district website and they will have a copy just like they would if they referenced it at the other location. But just a more clear matter of.
Correct. There is a copy of the calendar attached at the end of each of the board reports.
Sure. Thank you.
We will now move to item D, the boundary change between Lennox School District and Sioux Falls School District.
Thank you. At the school board meeting held March 8th, the board approved a resolution of intent for a boundary change with the Lennox School District, which includes a tax sharing agreement. That resolution waived the requirement to have an appraisal of the affected properties. The next step in the process is to hold a public hearing tonight. And that was advertised Friday, April 9th, 2021. We're looking, the piece of property we're looking at is right here. The red. When we did our, when we did our boundary change with Lennox last year, it was in question whether this property belonged to West Central or Lennox. And the idea was when it got resolved, the official statement was it was West Central's. If it got resolved and it turned out to be Lennox, we'd come and clean this up. So that's how we're doing this. It's about 75 acres. So I would just ask that you approve the resolution for the boundary change between the Lennox School District and the Sioux Falls School District and acknowledging the agreement for tax sharing. And then this does require a public hearing, so we'll have to have a public hearing on it first. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up for a public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to address this boundary change? Seeing then, we'll move on to any questions for Mr. Vick. Could you just let the public know, so once we, if we approve this, the process, I know it's like 30, the other district, Lennox, has to approve and then we.
Yeah, I think Lennox is doing their public hearing tonight as well. And then we will submit, you have to wait for, I think it's 30 days to see if either, if either district is challenged on the vote. If not, then we'll submit it to the Minnehaw County Commission for Approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution for a boundary change between Lennox School District and Sioux Falls School District for the new 75 acres?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion on second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved.
Thank you.
The next item is also a public hearing. It's our, it's our school district budget. The process began in November, at which time the board adopted guidelines and a timeline for the budget process between December and February. 19 subcommittees comprised of administration, professional and classified staff, and community members developed program budgets, which were then presented to the Budget Review Committee. That committee included two board members and representation from the subcommittees. The committee met on March 18th and developed recommendations for the full board. The full board had work sessions, which were held on March 31st and April 7th. So what we have here is a budget that is $190 million in the. And if we look at all the funds, it's about 276, just over 276 million for all of the tax-supported funds. We always look at what the, we're always interested in what state aid increases because in the general fund and the special ed fund, that's a very big part of that budget. The increase there was 2.4%. We usually tie our salary increases to the state aid, and what the board has again agreed to do 0.75% higher than what the state aid increase is. So the salary increases of 3.15% are built into the budget. With that, I would just say that I do want to switch over into a different document here. In the budget packet is what we call Exhibit 10, it's a kind of history of our property taxes. If you look at that document, I know it's kind of hard to see, but hopefully at home people can, and you can on your monitors. Our levies are scheduled to drop on a homeowner by 12 cents next year. And then we know that the value of houses usually goes up in a, in a typical year, so we actually look at one. And we'll go all the way back to 2000. That house was assessed at $98,000 in 2000. It's assessed at $200,000 now. We're projecting, because of the growth in the house, we're projecting, or in the value of the house next year, we're projecting a 1.5% increase. If we hadn't lowered the levy by 12 cents, it would have been about $22, more than $22.50, I think is what it is. So the actual increase is $23, so it would have been about 35 if, if not for that. So overall, over the whole period of time, you know, over the whole 22-year period, the average increase in the property taxes is 1.7%. And then occasionally, we kind of check ourselves against our neighbors. These districts all border or are very close to bordering Sioux Falls. It's kind of a busy chart here, but it's got the general fund, the special ed fund, the capital alley fund, the bond redemption fund, and then the totals for owner occupied and commercial property. We don't have a lot of ag property in our district, so we usually don't look at that. You can see our levy for owner occupied is 837, and that's this year, it's not next year, it's because I don't know what the other districts are doing. It's 837, the commercial property is 1232. Of our neighbors, of our 11, there's 11 of us, we rank 10th or second lowest in owner occupied and ninth in commercial value. And then sometimes you'll hear occasionally, yeah, we guys have so much property values versus everybody else, not really. When you do it on a per-student basis, our state, our state rank out of 149 districts, we're 130th. And out of the group here, we're seventh, so we're just, we're slightly below average in the group, we're way below average in, in the state rank as far as property value per student. So with that, I would ask the board to acknowledge the public hearing and tentatively approve the FY22 school district budget to allow Human Resources to offer employee contracts with the understanding that the budget will be brought forward for adoption and certification of levies at the annual meeting held July 12th, 2021. After the public hearing, I'll be available for questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vick. Open up for the public hearing on the budget. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Vick, thank you for this last slide, I specifically had asked because I think it's really important for our community, you know, A, we want to give a good value to our students, and we also want to make sure we're providing for our staff, but also being mindful of taxpayers in our community, that we're not overburdening them as well so that we can continue to be providing a good service. So I really appreciate this information because I think this is very informative to our taxpayers in the Sioux Falls area. This budget, obviously very complicated, very time-consuming. Went through, Nan Baker and myself were the committee members from the board that sat through the, the process. But it, it's been an interesting year, to say the least. And this budget, I think, as I mentioned earlier, with us being able to have more, you know, we're opening more buildings, spreading students out amongst them, but keeping the counselors, keeping the staffing at those levels to allow less students per teacher and per counselor will be helpful to our, our staff as well as to our students. And just knowing that what the monies we're getting with COVID that we have to be, I saw there's an article about the universities as well, being mindful that that money is a one-time money and not able to continue to use that in our budget or buy things that will impact our budget going forward. So thank you for being mindful of those things and presenting this budget to us.
I think there's a, a couple of new things that are being proposed, new positions, whether it's the ELL coordinator position, just some different things, different supports that we're looking at putting in place to try to really bring some of our programming, give it a little bit more attention and, and bring the, the potential or stretch that potential of those students and staff. So I think there's some really good nuggets in there that are in much-needed places. And so I'm thankful for that and excited to see the difference that that makes in, in those specific areas.
Seeing no more comments or questions, do I have a motion to acknowledge the public hearing and tentatively approve the FY22 school budget?
So moved.
So I got.
Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. For the public, we'll have the final adoption of this on July 12th. After the opt-out resolution.
Thank you, and in this budget, we, we're opting out again for $9.135 million. Since we've opted out for that amount for the last two or three, well, three years, I think it is. But we had a $7.5 million opt-out that is scheduled to go off the books in 2022. Three years ago, we called on our Finance Action Network, which is a group of finance-minded business folks that recommended to us by the chamber to go through and come out with a, a new opt-out strategy for when this $7.5 million would go off the books. That group recommended a school board, and we've adopted their recommendations so far, is instead of having a $7.5 million opt-out that comes up, and you, you can see it three years out, four years out, as you do your five-year plan, you do a laddering approach where you build in a little bit of inflation, but you, you know, their recommendation was 1.5 and then 1.6 and 1.7 million dollar opt-outs, just so that you've got them there. So in any year, if, if the, if you, the board doesn't opt out or can't opt out, then you, you don't have a $7.5 million hole in your budget, you might have a $1.005 hole in the budget that much easier to plan for as, as you're going forward. So tonight is just the extension of that, it's the third year, we got a $1.7 million opt-out. And we are not gonna, it's not gonna raise the taxes by 1.5, we're just opting out for the same amount. We're just replacing the $7.5 million opt-out that's going off the books with a new strategy. So with that, I would recommend that the board approve the resolution to opt out. You have it in front of you, if you want, I can, I can read it, but other than that, I'd stand by for questions.
And I just want to explain to people in attendance and to anybody watching, so we're adding to our capacity, but we're not actually kicking into that capacity because we're opting out for the same amount we did last year in that 9. whatever, whatever it is, 9.1 million?
3.5, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Opt out, but we're adding to our capacity since our 7.5 will be coming off the books at some time. So we're not actually kicking into that capacity this year.
Right, we're, yeah, our capacity will actually be a bit, but lower than it is right now because right now it's about 14, we've never levied that amount, but, but we have a 7.5 and a 5, and then the 1.5 and the 1.6 on the books, the 7.5's going off, we're going to replace that with 1.7. So our capacity will be $9.8 million next year. So, and we, we haven't asked for that amount yet either, I mean, we haven't to date asked for that amount, we're not asking for it next year. So you're right, but, but our capacity, full capacity would be 9.8, we've never levied that amount.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that because I think there was a report somewhere that it said that we were increasing it, and we are not at this point.
Yeah, unfortunately, the ad you have to put in the paper makes it look like you're, you're raising taxes, we're not. We're actually lowering the rate, taxes are going up 1.5% as we saw, including the inflation on the hollow, which is actually lower, lower than, than inflation because we lowered the levy. So we're lowering, the opt-out's staying flat, and we're actually lowering the, the rates that homeowners are paying.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Vick? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the resolution for the opt-out?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, that is approved. Moving on to policy, Kate is going to handle, thank you.
Yes, we have several policies up here tonight for review revision.
Kate, would you move your mic a little closer, sorry, thank you.
Yes, we have several policies up for review revision tonight, and somehow I just scrolled all the way to the bottom of the document. I'll go ahead and read them through, some had changes, minor changes, some had none, no changes. And just as a reminder to those here and those maybe listening at home, the, we bring these policies up sort of through a cycle. So they just come up regularly so that we can review them and make sure that is current practice and update them as, as necessary. So sometimes we have changes and sometimes we don't. So we have GBEBC, Staff Gifts and Solicitations, we updated the language to include district administrative approval. GBEC and its accompanying regulation, Drug-Free Workplace, no changes. GBECA and its accompanying regulation, Drug, Alcohol Testing for Commercial Drivers and Students, no changes. GBECB and its accompanying regulation, Alcohol-Free Workplace, we removed language about submitting the signed form to Human Resources since the document is now submitted online. GBEG, Searches of Employee Property or District-Owned Provided Property, no changes. GCCAC and its accompanying regulation, Family and Medical Leave, no changes. JP, Student Donations and Gifts, no changes. KCD and its accompanying regulation, Public Gifts, Donations to Schools, we updated language to include district administrative approval. So I would move to approve the review revision of those said policies.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, we are, have approved those changes, thank you very much. Anything else for the good of the board? Just a reminder, the petitions have, were completed, we have five school board members running for the election, May 18th. May 3rd, early voting starts, and May 3rd is also the deadline to register to vote, I believe. Early voting will start at IPC here, Bev has hired someone, so it makes it really easy to come in and vote early if you would rather not vote on the 18th. Otherwise, the 18th will have several voting centers around the community that you can vote at any of them. You don't have to vote at a designated precinct, so we're trying to make it as easy and accessible to everyone. So thank you very much, please be engaged in the election, and there's two seats open, so thank you very much. Seeing nothing else, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, we are adjourned, thank you.